We're both, we're both authorized to vote for the motion. Yeah.
Our council president has yet to appear, so I'm going to start by convening the meeting so we can get going on time and hear your voices. So I'd like to call to order the Bellingham City Council meeting. As for announcements, the Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
And Michael Lillquist is yet to be here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get started with a presentation, and this is a presentation from Puget Sound Energy, and they are awarding us a rebate to the tune of $442,000. So, please take it away.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We're happy to start off tonight's meeting with a presentation, as Councilmember Murphy mentioned. That's related to our LED streetlight project. So as the council knows, we've recently converted all of the city-owned streetlights from high-pressure sodium to LED, which certainly is going to save us a tremendous amount of energy, reduce the city's emissions, and provide some safer, better, higher-quality light. And we couldn't have done that without all of our partners, including Puget Sound Energy, who, as you know, the city has a long history with as it relates to energy efficiency projects. From Post Point to a project like this, we've always worked very well with Puget Sound Energy and have been fortunate enough over the years to receive several rebates. Obviously, this is a very large rebate and really was instrumental in making our project work financially. To finance the LED streetlights, we relied on a number of different funding sources, including a grant from the Department of Commerce, anticipating the savings in energy and maintenance ongoing throughout the life of the streetlights, but certainly also the rebate from Puget Sound Energy. So we have several members from the project team here tonight, including Clark Williams, who's, excuse me, was the city's project manager on this. He's superintendent in Public Works Department and really took this project from the very beginning through completion. And at this point, I'd like to call up Andy Wapler from Puget Sound Energy, and he's going to say a few things about Puget Sound Energy's role in this project. And then we'd like to bring the project team up as they award us a check a little bit later. So, Andy?
Thank you, council members. I appreciate being here tonight on behalf of Puget Sound Energy. My name is Andy Wapler. I'm the vice president of Customer Operations and Communications. And we know that Bellingham is a great leader in energy, green power, often discussion here, and we're excited to be talking about this tonight because when we work on the streetlight program, it's both great from an environmental standpoint, you're using less energy, but also is great in terms of public safety and keeping the streets lit in a way that is easy on customers' wallets, but provides them the service that they want through using this new technology. We have a cast of thousands here tonight. We have a number of people from PSC, and if they could stand up, we have Michael, Andrew, and Matt from our lighting and energy efficiency groups. We also have representatives from the state of Washington, McKinstry, Northwest Edison, and Echelon, which are the lighting controls. And you can either wave or stand up. It's your choice. There they are. And of course, your city team. It takes a lot of people because this was a very big project. Over 4,000 streetlights in the city being replaced from the old-fashioned high-pressure sodium to now LED fixtures. And not only are they now the LED, the new lighting, which use about 10% of the energy of the old lighting, they're also what are called adaptive lights, meaning they can be smart and go from day-to-night types of settings. They're the first controls with this in our service area, in Puget Sound Energy's service area. So thank you for helping us lead the way in that. They reduce the light levels at night and save energy, so that's great if you live on a street that's lit up. It's not quite as bright, but then when you need them, they're brighter for traffic control and other things. And the savings is about 2 million kilowatt-hours a year, and of course, we all know what that means. Who knows what that means? We'll translate that into homes and cars, right? 230 homes' worth of electricity will be saved, or the equivalent in greenhouse gases of taking more than 300 cars off the road. So, yeah, it is 2.2 million kilowatt-hours, but more meaningfully, that's a couple hundred homes or more than 300 cars' worth of emissions. And that's great to see. The project is big, certainly for Bellingham, big for PSC, too. Just this project alone will help us meet about 5% of our goals around street lighting here this year. So thank you for that. I'd like to bring the project team up if we could, and they have the giant check, which is always fun to have. We like bringing these around. And what I love about these programs is that they really help the city do more of what I think residents probably want, which is not so much pay the light bill, but get services done. So there's the giant check, and of course, we have a giant check. You gotta do a giant group photo.
Don't get it too close to them. They'll grab it.
Wow.
We did.
We'll go on to our second item, which is a public hearing to consider an application for a cable television franchise from Quest Broadband Services, which is doing business as CenturyLink. We have our Director of IT, Ms. Marty Maholand, here to present.
Good evening, council, and thank you for listening to this afternoon and this evening. So it's a doubleheader related to this topic. I'm going to present just a very abbreviated version of the slides we discussed this afternoon. So I think everyone may recognize that CenturyLink applied for a cable television franchise agreement with the city, and the city staff team has been negotiating with CenturyLink for the better part of a year in order to develop the franchise that you're considering this evening. We have published the materials on the city's website, including a staff report and the proposed franchise that you're reviewing tonight. So I'm just going to walk through some franchise basics and some highlights from the agreement before you open your hearing. So what is a franchise agreement? It is a contract between the city and a cable television operator and provides terms and conditions related to that operator's use of city rideaway. So CenturyLink has infrastructure in our rideaway, and this agreement addresses how that interacts between their use of the rideaway and the city. It includes some financial provisions, community interest provisions. It addresses PEG programming, which stands for Public Education and Government Access Programming Channels, which are provided in the agreement. And the only PEG channel in our community is BTV Bellingham, which the city operates. It also includes technical provisions and enforcement provisions. A key to this agreement, we have to look at this from the standpoint of CenturyLink being a second provider in our community. Our current provider is called the incumbent provider, and that is Comcast Cable. And Comcast provides cable TV service throughout the city community. CenturyLink as a second provider is not and would not provide all of the same provisions as our incumbent, and we'll address that in just a moment. Many people ask if these agreements help us contain cable TV rates, and the answer is no. So we don't have the ability to regulate rates, and so this agreement does not address those. This agreement also does not address other services that people think about when they think of companies like CenturyLink, in that it does not address internet services or telephone services. So what are the impacts of having a second cable television provider in the community? First and foremost, the service will not be available to every single address in the community. It is limited. And some of the franchise requirements, the other requirements, would be phased in over time as CenturyLink gains market share. Our incumbent operator, Comcast, is currently serving about 20,000 addresses in the community. So that's kind of the percentage of addresses we're talking about as we phase in and talk about market share. It would provide a second cable television choice for those in the community who could receive TV service from CenturyLink. And in terms of fiscal impact, we're unclear what that will mean to the city in terms of our fiscal impact, because the rates and fees paid to us depend upon the community and their adoption of these services and the revenue that those services bring in. So we're not really clear what precisely this will mean in terms of city revenue. Walking through some of the highlights, this is a 10-year agreement that is the same term as our existing agreement with the incumbent. However, in this particular case, CenturyLink can terminate if they haven't reached 20% of the market share at the five-year mark. The financial provisions are largely identical to those in our incumbent agreement. The franchise fee rate is 5%. That's what the cable operator pays to us in terms of, it's a percentage of their revenue that they make while using the city rideaway. The PEG fees are 50 cents per subscriber per month, and that money is used to pay for equipment. That is the same as with our incumbent. And the monthly payment and reporting requirements are the same largely as our incumbent agreement. Service availability, however, is kind of the key difference, or one of the key differences, between these agreements. So CenturyLink provides cable TV service to an address based on their infrastructure. Do they have the right infrastructure to serve and provide their television to a specific address? And it's their technical requirement that must be met. CenturyLink has stated that they anticipate being able to reach 6,200 addresses within the first year if this agreement moves forward. And so residents who might be listening to this now and are wondering, hey, will I be able to get cable TV from CenturyLink? The answer is, we don't know right now, but members of the community, within about 30 days of this agreement being passed by the council, would be able to go to the CenturyLink website or call CenturyLink and determine whether a specific address was going to be served. When we have services area restriction like that, I think this next bullet is pretty important. CenturyLink has stated in the agreement that they cannot deny service to any group based on race or income levels, and they can't deny decisions as to where they construct the service based on race or income levels. The franchise also does provide for PEG channels, these local, non-commercial channels. It'll provide BTV Bellingham in standard definition and in high definition. It will provide a third channel if they reach 30% market share. Our Comcast agreement does allow for a third channel without a market share restriction, so that's a difference here if that occurred and that was of interest to the city. Provides a number of low-discount programs, provides for closed captioning service. Closed captioning is required in both agreements. Some of the reporting requirements are phased in over time. And then another fairly visible difference between the agreements is relating to a customer service location. Initially, CenturyLink would offer payment locations in the greater Bellingham area, but if they reached a 30% market share, they would provide a more robust customer service location in the Bellingham city limits. So that is the very brief version of this. I've got the website back up. We'll wrap up by saying that if the council moves forward, this franchise would be effective 15 days following that, assuming it was signed by both parties within 60 days. So thank you very much.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open public hearing, see if anyone has signed up to speak. Thanks. Okay, signed up to speak for the public hearing is first Chris Stiley, followed by Kerry Kowalewski.
Hi, my name is Chris Stiley. I'm homeless here. Mine is very brief, and it's regarding the arbitrary decision-making on the cable TV, particularly potentially with this one, but with BTV-10, even though they've done a really great job, I think, like over the past eight years, I've been involved in these meetings. They once had my dog, my service dog, they took a shot of her, she was crashed beside her by my feet, which is really humorous. The camera work was really funny, but what wasn't funny was that last week at the Bonham County meeting, when the arbitrary decision was made to allow Michael Lillquist to speak a second time on an agenda item, and they arbitrarily decided not to let me speak as well. They said it was because Michael Lillquist was the city council member, and they were granting him permission to speak, which I don't have, it's their meeting, you know, they can do what they want. What happened with BTV-10, when I got up to speak at the podium and they denied me the opportunity to speak like Michael Lillquist, the BTV-10 did not show me on the video. They cut away from that. So the entire thing of me being denied the opportunity to speak was muted, and it wasn't shown. Nobody could see me that I was being denied. And what I was trying to speak about was my friend Mike, my friend Keith Benner, when he committed suicide in a seminary, as it was tied into the jail issue of religious-based programming being court-ordered. So really, they should have allowed me to speak, but that's not my beef. My beef is that the cable, BTV-10, that they muted it and they censored it. And I think that that's, who's ever making those arbitrary decisions, if this cable programming, if that has anything, you know, if there's any correlation between those two issues, then I think that should be under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, Kerry Kowalewski.
This will be short and sweet, which is something you're not used to from me. I just wanted to say that I completely believe in this contract with CenturyLink, and I believe that Comcast is a monopoly. And finally, let's have some competition to drive down the prices. I think it's ridiculous that I pay nearly $200 a month just to have internet, a landline, and basic cable. So let's bring on the competition, and let's sign two or three more of these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Would anyone else like to speak on the issue of franchise agreement with CenturyLink for cable television? If you'd like to speak, just come forward and state your name. Use the microphone, please.
Hello, my name is Zoran O'Neil. I've lived in Bellingham for seven years, and I agree with the previous speaker that Comcast's monopoly should be challenged, that they simply get away with charging too much just because they have no competition. And I welcome the entry of CenturyLink into the market, and I hope it will have the desired effect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak for this public hearing? Okay, seeing then, we'll bring the hearing to a close, bring it back to the city council. Roxanne?
Personally, I'm very excited that CenturyLink is willing to invest in our community. I agree with the speakers also. We need to offer choice for our consumers, and I really hope that over time it will stabilize costs. So I'm very happy to vote that we would, let's see, approve the application for CenturyLink to start to offer services in our Bellingham community.
Second.
So, Peter, that item actually is coming up later in the meeting. This is just the public hearing portion. So that would be Agenda Item...where is it? Oh, it's Agenda Item 21671 is the actual franchise agreement. That's the, do we just approve the hearing?
We can take it in either order.
Either order? Okay.
Why don't we do it now?
We'll just do it now. We have a motion for us to approve the franchise agreement with CenturyLink. Any discussion on this issue? April?
For those that haven't been involved in this process, this was an over-year-long process that Jean and I set on a committee. So there's only so much of a bubble we can try to negotiate within, and Marty did a fabulous job, as well as James Earp, who's not here today, our lawyer. It was a very educational process. I feel like we got the best that we possibly could out of it, and looking forward to, I think, what everybody else is, to see what it'll look like if we get a little competition on the table. But also, just in giving choice, I mean, beyond competition, people should have choice. And so it was a pleasure to serve on this committee. Again, huge learning curve, but I learned a ton, and I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Okay. I do want to comment just so people understand. The city cannot put any bar against anyone who wants to offer, you know, cable TV services. We've never said no. As a matter of fact, it's almost impossible for the city to say no. We can only ask for reasonable revisions, which is what we did. So we've never been keeping competition out, and the door's always been open. This is the first serious provider who stepped forward, and this is the agreement that we've negotiated. And as Marty indicated, it doesn't have to do with internet or telephone. By federal law, we can't regulate those. Just a television capisce. Okay, all those in favor of approving the franchise agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That concludes our public hearing and that Agenda Item. We will now go on to the report, oh, actually, a public comment period, I'm sorry. 15-minute public comment period. It's your moment to come forward and speak to the city council. We're gonna go ahead and start with Chris Stiley and Kerry Kowalewski. We'll start again, and then we'll go to, Steve Gilmore will be third. Chris, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Chris Stiley. This is on the incarceration reduction issue, and as it involves the religious-based programming, and my objection to people being court-ordered into religious-based programming. And specifically, the narrative on this is both the substance abuse and recovery from substance abuse, the narrative is being controlled very tightly, whether it's from the people pushing the drugs, or it's the people that are making money off of the treatment industry. They're controlling the narrative. Chester Bennington and Chris Cornell, they're famous singers that recently died. Following Cornell's death, his brother Peter revealed that he was being bullied and threatened to change the narrative of his awareness message on suicide and depression, or depression and suicide prevention. Quote, "It has reached the point where my own mental health, my sobriety, and the safety of my family are at risk. And this bullying is coming from a place I never could have imagined." End quote. That's regarding his trying to speak out about one in three people who take their lives suffer from substance abuse issues. All right? He's being threatened on that. I'm being threatened in the AA meetings. I'm gonna share some of these quotes that I've received, both from being openly gay in the meetings in Anchorage, Alaska, and from trying to speak of, address the abuse in Alcoholics Anonymous. These are the hateful, these are the threatening comments I've received, not only being physically attacked in a meeting. In Anchorage, I was told, my being openly gay in AA, that's not the message we gave you. We gave you your sobriety, and we can take it away from you. In Newport, Oregon, no. And one man said, as far as gay people, we used to set them on fire. Okay? In Newport, Oregon, I was told, we can make you kill yourself. In Mount Vernon, I was told, you think you're safe in this meeting? You are not. I will shoot you right in the head and kill you. Finally, and this shows a hate group involvement, we will F your skull. I was told that in Crescent City, California, California. The most hateful vicious thing I've ever heard in my life, and I hate to even repeat that here in public. That, to me, indicates hate group involvement. And when people are court-ordered into religious-based programming, gay people are at risk of such abuse, and they resort to suicide, as my friend Keith Benner killed himself in a seminary. All right? I think it's wrong, and I keep speaking about it, and nobody's listening to me. I've tried to speak with the administrative court judge at Watcom County. I've gotten no response. I can't speak with anybody. I'm a homeless person with no voice. I've gotten a lobbyist to put a stop to this, and you guys know that this is wrong. You know it's a separation of church and state issue, of which Reinhold Niebuhr, the author of the Serenity Prayer, spoke out against in 1958 in an interview with Mike Wallace. You can pull that up online. This, to me, is really, really bothersome, and more so because I can't get anything done about it.
Thank you, Chris. Kerry Kowalewski is next, followed by Steve Gilmore, and then Yoshi Ravel.
I'm talking a little bit more about housing tonight. Just on Friday, there was an article online on MSN Money, and it was a study that was done, and Bellingham, out of 39 cities, was ranked number 22 as far as spending more than 30% of their income on housing. So basically, they said that households able to afford monthly payments in Bellingham is 43.3%. The median single-family house price in Bellingham is 317,300. In 2015, the median household income was $55,016, and the five-year population change is 6.5%. So the median home price in the Bellingham metro area has gone up 5.6% faster than incomes in the last year, nearly double the corresponding national home price-to-income ratio change. Rising home prices are also affecting renters. Just 22% of renters in the Bellingham metro area can comfortably bludgeon their monthly housing costs. So continuing from what I said about a month or so back, the foreign buyers, along with elites who have a lot of money coming from out of town, out of state, are making it unaffordable for Bellinghammers. They make more money where they live, and they are investing their money here. Vancouver has implemented regulations to prevent shadow inventory, which is people buying property and not living there, which is more than likely pushing investors to buy in Bellingham. We need to implement a similar We need to implement a similar regulation. I believe Vancouver has a fee of 15%, don't quote me on that, of the total value of the property, but this isn't high enough. If we implement something similarly, then we should consider increasing the percentage to 20 or 25%. The middle class is being pushed out of Bellingham and we need a solution to this problem. Your solution is to build more affordable housing, but how does this accomplish anything? Only low-income people qualify. So you have elites or low-income people who can live in Bellingham. What about the middle class? You are out of touch with reality and your policies are doing nothing to help the middle class. The city needs to annex more land so builders can actually build. Permitting prices need to be made easier so builders can actually build. Bellingham needs urban sprawl. Maybe it's time to rethink and redraw the city limits since the population is growing and is going to continue to grow. Your idea of increasing population to have townhouses built on a small piece of land or to have 10 houses built on top of each other. Who wants to share common walls in which you always have to worry about? You or your neighbor making too much noise. Who wants to live in a house in which you can stand and put your arm out and touch your neighbor's house? Who doesn't want to have a house in which there is a yard for your kids to play in, an area to grow a garden, and a space to raise some chickens? Another solution you have is to build more apartments so that Western students can move out of the rental houses, making it so more houses are available to buy. How do you know this will work? How do you know that investors will want to sell these houses instead of turning around and renting it out to someone else?
Thank you, Kerry. Up next is Steve Gilmore, followed by Yoshi Ravel, and then Everett Barton.
Hello, members of the council and Mayor of Linville. My name is Steve Gilmore. I'm municipal relationship manager with Republic Services. Republic Services is humbled and honored by the recommendation of your staff to keep our nearly two-decade partnership going between the city and Republic Services. A couple of questions came up earlier today regarding, Councilor Barker asked a question regarding the website error in terms of the information that was on our website. She is correct. The information on our website that she found said 10 megawatts of electricity and in actuality, we're generating currently 20 megawatts of electricity with the installed capacity of 37 megawatts. The Kilkatap PUD runs that facility at the landfill. So thank you for catching that error. We really appreciate it. Our IT department is actually correcting that error as we speak, hopefully. Councilmember Vargas asked a question earlier regarding the renewable energy gas project. In 2015, we actually worked with the Kilkatap County PUD to pass legislation in Olympia to actually allow them to use the renewable energy tax credit to basically utilize that tax credit for the facility. So the good news is, is that it was passed by both houses in Olympia, signed by the governor. And currently, the project is actually, we're proud to report, that design work is underway. Financing is in place. The CEPR review actually has just started last week. Financing is in place and construction will be completed in mid-2018. So the renewable natural gas project is well underway and is an exciting project to utilize the methane in a really productive way that generates clean natural gas for the pipeline. Thank you for your time tonight. Look forward to the ongoing conversation and relationship with Bellingham.
Thank you, Steve. Up next is Yoshi Ravel, followed by Everett Barton, and then Jeremy Schwetter.
Thank you. My name is Yoshi Ravel. Thank you, members of the audience, members of staff, the city council, Madam Mayor. I heard the words "choice" and "bullying" earlier. I wonder how many of us know what the original word for advertising is? When advertising was first brought to the United States, it was originally called propaganda. And yes, the people who made advertising big in the United States studied the Nazi propaganda machine. That's what advertising is. We are training ourselves to overconsume. Advertising makes all these things look wonderful. Oh, that, that product, that service will solve my problems. Advertising trains us to overconsume because we feel bad, I don't know why I'm hurting, maybe that product, maybe that service. And so we get it. And it doesn't help. Because our pains are not solved by stuff. We have a problem with climate change. It's real and we're causing it. And we're all in denial about it. Because we keep overconsuming. We keep thinking, "Stuff is going to solve my problems." And the advertisers keep advertising and we keep getting stuff. Stuff isn't going to solve our problems. We need to be genuinely kind with each other. I saw a homeless person sleeping out in the lawn here. We shouldn't have homeless people. It shouldn't happen. And yet we do. Because we keep getting stuff, thinking that's going to solve our problems. And then we get climate change because we keep getting stuff. I ask us each, and I say "us" because I'm still struggling with this myself, to think about what we're doing and say, "Do I really need that? Or have I been bullied by an ad into thinking I need that?" Because I guarantee, most of the time, the question will be answered with a "No, I don't need that." But if I help a homeless person sleeping on the grass, maybe that, that giving and receiving of love and kindness will help. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Everett Barton, you are next, followed by Jeremy Schwetter.
Hi, I'm Everett Barton, 24-year resident of, well, I came here in 1994, but I've been in Bellingham. I'm currently in Puget neighborhood. And tonight, I want to speak about a couple of jail issues. The classic sign that we see in cartoons, now in The Simpsons, of a face poem is this because it's static. But since 2015, we've been going like this, my cohort, community, Restorative Community Coalition, and the shareholders, voters, and taxpayers that I represent. And I'm sorry to say that the egg on some people's face tonight is going to probably harden between now and November. But I have a clear means of removing that egg, and that is to vote no on the new jail initiative, tax initiative. We do not need the new 2/10% tax. And I know that you guys only voted for the use agreement, financial use agreement, so it's not your fault that it got on the ballot. But that extra 2/10% can be used. We're in an earthquake zone. There's other needs that are going to come up. Our community is aging more. We're going to have more EMT needs, and on and on. And so we don't want to strap that tax into use only for the communities, for the continued noble cause corruption that the executive has been perpetrating since 2003 or '04, since the first initial request for a jail tax increase was authorized. The second point is, we do not want a penitentiary out on the land in Ferndale, Mr. Mutchler. As much as you want it and you want all those big privateers out there grooming and combing over people and feeding them their little bit of food every mealtime, we don't want that. That is family property out there. We have Pioneer Days, we have Hod Van der Park, we've got the Tenant Center, we've got the Scottish Highland activities, and then the balloons in August. And that's, we don't want to be driving out there and saying, "If you're not good, you're going to end up in there." No penitentiary on that land in Ferndale. Now, the sad thing is, this is a win-win situation for the county executive. Because even if we vote no again in November, he's got that $6 million piece of property that he can turn on a dime to the GEO group or to the prison industrial complex.
Thank you. Time is up. Just a reminder to people, when it comes to items that are on the ballot, we're not allowed to use this forum to speak either for or against the ballot item. You can talk about jail, but not the ballot item. Jeremy Schwetter, you're next. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening. I'm a Bellingham resident. Name is Jeremy Schwetter. And I just want to say thank you for what you do. I'm sure you can make a lot more money doing something else. But I wanted to actually address you tonight about the proposed bill 21679, the Criminal Justice Committee. And as I understand it, the goal of this bill is to create an oversight committee to safeguard vulnerable members of our city, to oversee our police department, to make sure that justice is being served. I believe, however, that this bill could foster an underlying sense of a lack of trust and a scrutinizing eye that I don't think would best serve what we're hoping to develop here in Bellingham. I humbly suggest that this could cause more walls and a further divide, causing less transparency as police officers have a tendency to want to pull back as opposed to be more forthcoming. I believe that something might be better served, such as what was recently an event called Outside the Bubble. I don't know if you heard about it, but it was recently hosted in the Waukam County area where they found people of different ideologies, different members of society, different cultures, different groups. And they put them together in a forum for a dinner where they asked leading questions to find out where people were coming from, what their views were, why did they come to this specific worldview? I believe that something in this line of thinking would be more helpful, more constructive as we seek to bring people together, matching individuals from different places to hear each other. I believe an effort along this line would help us bring together police officers, those in law enforcement, and those in the community so that they can learn from each other and together collaborate on this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. That concludes our 15-minute public comment period for today. Thank you. You weren't signed up. Is there any objection by the council? Okay. Come forward, sir, and please state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Larry McCarter. I'm the local businessperson that started RDS over 20 years ago. Public Works is recommending you abandon transfer station recycling and to ignore our city's commitment to our county's and state recycling laws. Just one example of staff's many mistakes is their incomplete analysis of trucks and trains. In Mr. Carlson's memo to the city council, he is telling you in paragraph 6.1, and I quote, "Republic uses trains and RDS uses diesel trucks," end quote. Staff is misrepresenting the facts. Both Republic and RDS RFPs clearly state that we both use trains and we both use trucks. Both landfills are almost identical. Only RDS recycles mixed solid waste before the waste is landfilled. In addition to recycling, I want you to focus on the single thing, price. At the time of our RFP submission, RDS was and still is by far the cheapest solution. The Public Works staff ignored and does not give weight to RDS's zero-cost, free, clean-green program. Ted Carlson's own January 4th memo valued this service as offered in my proposal at $20,000. Public Works ignored and gave no weight for any of RDS's value-added service, which, just like the clean-green program, if calculated with Mr. Carlson's own math, results in RDS's offering a price that is at least $1.20 a ton lower than Republic's price. RDS not only recycles, but RDS is cheaper. And not only is RDS cheaper, we create local jobs and produce tangible, measurable recycling results at no additional cost to the city. Last year, RDS recycling diverted four times the tonnage of all the curbside programs. RDS system diverted 20,000 tons last year alone. That's twice what the residential waste that we're talking about. We recycled it and didn't ship it to the landfills. Republic's RFP indicates that they intend to send 100% of all received waste to the landfills for the next 20 years. RDS proposes to continue doing our aggressive pre-landfilling recycling by employing union recyclers to pull out recyclables from all waste, including the city's residential, partially presorted trash. Every piece of garbage diverted from the landfill makes Bellingham a greener city. For over two decades in our community, I have been, I'm sorry, for two decades in the community, I have invested millions of disposal dollars into my employees and creating a facility that aggressively works towards achieving a zero-waste community. RDS is a carbon-neutral business. My company's mission is in our name, which means we provide recycling and disposal services. I thought this is what the community wanted, but maybe I was wrong. If the council accepts Public Works' recommendation, I will hear you tell me that I should stop recycling and terminate my union recycling employees, the station, to terminate my employees because there's no way RDS can compete with the Republic Services ownership of a landfill station. If you, I'm not done. But I appreciate your help and being there. And I do have some documentation, basically what I said.
Okay, please pass those out. And that will conclude our 15-minute public comment period. Thank you, everyone. We'll now go on to reports of our regularly scheduled standing committees. The first committee that met this morning was Planning chaired by Councilmember Jean Knutson.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item this morning. It was a continuation of our Planning Committee work sessions. Today, we were focused in a little bit on affordable housing. This morning, we heard from Steve Clark, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning of the Bellingham Public Schools. It was an eye-opening session with the problems that the Bellingham School District is having now, trying to place students. They're overcrowding in some schools. Cordada's having a tough time. They're going to be moving some students out of Squalicum High. We listened to Mr. Clark for almost an hour. We also had Chris Behe, who was there with his numbers like always. We have 2,950 units in the pipeline in the next four to six years. Last year, we had 1,350 new babies born in Bellingham. I mean, the guy has numbers on everything. I mean, you want to know something, go see Chris Behe. You want who's going to win the next election? Go see Chris Behe. He'll tell you. But no, he really, and it was really a great hour spent because we learned a lot. Also there was Rick Sepler, Brian Heinrich, Mayor of Linville. But we had a good session and also the numbers on the infill toolkit are rising rapidly. It started out, for years and years and years, it was zero. Now it's close to 400 or 500 and rising. Developers are coming in and asking, how do they install the infill toolkit? So that's refreshing after all the years of debate whether the infill toolkit was worth keeping or not. So we're going to have another session in a couple of weeks and I think we'll be talking with Chris Behe. He will be coming with us for some more numbers. And Marie did send out an email to all of you today. You really should look at it. It's the PowerPoint that Chris gave. I mean, it's just, he's got the numbers and that. So it was a great session and it's really eye-opening. When we talk about affordable housing, it's not just about rent, it's not just about availability, but it's also now, it's really creeping into the school system in many, many ways. It's affecting bus routes, it's affecting attendance, it's affecting everything. And the plea from his was, hopefully, we can work with the school district and help. So it was a great session. It was really, it was a very well-spent hour. End of committee.
Thank you, Jean. Up next was the Public Works and Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. Our committee had four items before us today. The first was a presentation on the city of Bellingham's Community Paramedic Program, an update. The fire department staff provided a presentation on the Community Paramedic Program, highlighting its achievements and continued opportunities. For people new to the Community Paramedic Program, the Community Paramedic is a kind of a proactive program. It targets high users of our EMS services and attempts to, through proactively contacting them, to reduce the number of people using our EMS services and many times using our jails and using the hospital by helping to intervene before problems continue to escalate. Just a couple examples of the work of why this is necessary and why it's important. Two patients accounted for 73 EMS responses. Thirty of the high users Thirty of the high users, the ultra-users accounted for 428 or 4% of all the EMS responses. The 200 high-utilizers accounted for 1,312 or 11% of all EMS responses. By targeting these high users, we cut down on the need for additional EMS services and hospital visits. We cut back on some of the need for people being jailed for mental health issues and others. Those who are considered for the program or within that high user, high-utilizers, number one was aging and disabled at 43%. Two was complex medical cases, 42%. Medical health was 36%. Substance abuse, 32%. Mobility and fall risk, 28%. Homeless, 22%. As you notice, these add up way more than 100%, and that's because many of the people that are contacted by the paramedic service are fit in multiple categories, some in all of these categories. One of the things we're finding is that the paramedic program is working to reduce the amount of money spent, the time and energy used by the fire department and the police department and the hospitals. We're scheduled to fund through the EMS levy program, a countywide paramedic program. So this was for information only. I'd highly recommend people going to Channel 10 or to the, on their computer, to look at the presentation that was given, and this was information only. The next item before the committee was the Residential Solid Waste Disposal Contract. In the city of Bellingham, residential solid waste and recyclables are sorted by customers. By contract, Sanitation Service Company, or SSC collects all sorted residential recyclable commodities, organics, and solid waste. In June 2016, the city issued a request for proposals for the disposal of curb-sorted residential solid waste collected and hauled by SSC. The city's intent is to contract with the final disposable site best able to meet the city's interests for a low-risk, stable location and to minimize climate impact and greenhouse gas emissions. In accordance with RCW 35.21.1563, staff reviewed the two written proposals received and conducted interviews with the respondents. Republic Services and Waste Management, RDS, staff recommends negotiating a contract with Republic Services. We didn't, the committee didn't vote on this today. We set it over for a vote tonight, so I will turn this over to you, Michael, for the...
Okay, councilmembers, what's your pleasure?
I would recommend approval of staff's, that we approve negotiations with the selected respondents, which would be Republic Services.
You're second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the direction, or approve negotiation with a selected respondent. Is there a discussion on this issue?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, this issue, well, it started, it's been going for about a year now, and it's come before this committee in the past to look at the criteria set for determining the contract. The committee approved those criteria. The council as a whole approved the criteria used, and that was the criteria that staff recommends approval of. So, you know, I have to, since we approved the criteria and it fits, I'm willing to stand by the staff's recommendation and approve, vote yes for that.
April?
Ted, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Now that we have time to talk. In the process, you get down to 3.8, and it suggests that staff, and just looking at the written proposals, was, there was no real significant difference between the two companies, but then upon interview and re-looking back at the written proposals, one rose more to the top. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that was in that moment that made that one rise more?
Absolutely, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We did really consider all the information, so we did take the information that was provided through the written proposals, as well as what we heard during the oral presentations. And as it was outlined in the staff report, we really came down to three different criteria that we thought were key to this. One was transportation, how the residential solid waste went from the recycling, or I'm sorry, the transfer station here in Waukam County to the ultimate final destination, the landfill. And was, as was mentioned tonight, both of the landfill companies do use both rail and truck. That is true, and we did analyze that. RDS Waste Management trucks it from their site on Slater Road to Seattle where it goes on rail to the Columbia Ridge landfill. Our Republic has a rail connection at their transfer facility, so it's loaded onto rail, goes all the way to the landfill where it does have to be trucked to the final destination within the landfill. And that was analyzed. We looked at that and even comparing both all the way through, from the transfer station to the landfill, we made the determination based on the additional distance by rail, that was really the key determination, that the transportation by Republic was superior. A second item that we looked at was the actual landfill operation. Again, considering the information that was provided to us, so Republic spent a significant amount of time in both their written proposal and in their oral presentation, talking about energy production at the landfill, both the current production as well as projects that were funded and moving forward, and capacity at their plant. Much less time was spent on that in the Waste Management RDS proposal. So we took a look at the information that was provided and made the determination that very close, very similar landfills, but again, we gave the edge to Republic. And finally, was price. And when you looked at the unit cost, again, very close, but the unit cost, the tonnage cost, Republic was slightly cheaper, and we felt that even more of a differentiation was how they handled price escalation moving forward over the term of a very long contract, proposed a 20-year contract, where Republic was tied to an inflator, which is very common in our contracts, whatever the CPI or whatever the inflator was used, I'd have to look at it, was, that's what the increase in tonnage cost would be. RDS Waste Management had a similar proposal, but yet they also had a minimum 2% increase. So in times where the inflator was less than 2%, there would still be a 2% increase in the tonnage cost. That can add up over time. We've seen other contracts based on the inflator. When you look at the compounding interest over time, it can be significant when you look 10 or 20 years out in terms of what the tonnage price was. So again, that was another deciding factor. You know, to address what was mentioned tonight in terms of other services that were offered through the RDS Waste Management proposal, there were some offers of free Clean Green and other community pickups. We did look at that. The city has transitioned away from Clean Green. Our focus is on curbside. We talked about that this afternoon. We're seeing 9%, 10% increase in food plus subscriptions through sanitary service, which is not mandatory, but folks are moving towards that, and that's consistent with what we'd like to see happen, where you get both the organic Clean Green material, but also the food components. That's where we believe the greatest opportunity for reducing landfilling is at, and we talked about that this afternoon as well. So those are really the issues. Some came out in the presentation, others were, you know, clear within the written proposals as well, but we considered all of the information provided, and that was the basis of our recommendation.
Another question? Go ahead. Do you have a question? Pinky?
I just wanted to say, as we go forward on a vote, that we were given criteria and that we are basing, I am basing my decision entirely on the criteria that was provided in the original and the information received in the application. In my day job, I look at RFPs all the time, and it's really hard to just focus, and that's something we have to do, on the criteria that is given and the application and the information that is applicable to the RFP. So I just want to say that my vote is entirely on criteria and the information received, which is how I do all my RFPs.
April, again?
So is, when we say tonnage, is the tonnage at SSC is measuring it when they drop it at the transfer station, or is the tonnage measured once it goes to the landfill?
What they bring to the transfer station.
Okay, so even if the transfer station was able to recycle more, it would still be the same, same cost in tonnage if less was brought to the landfill?
That's correct. You know, and I might, I might just speak to that because I know that that's been an issue that has been, has been raised in terms of how the residential solid waste is dealt with at the two different transfer facilities. And it was something that we spent a lot of time looking at and considered the written information, as well as what we're trying to ask follow-up questions in the presentation in terms of what additional diversion happens at the transfer stations with residential solid waste. And what we received, both in the oral presentation and in written communication when we pressed on that, is that the residential solid waste, because it's source-separated at the curb, there isn't additional recycling, very little additional recycling that comes out of that, if any, and that's, that came to us from both proponents.
Yeah, I think that that part is where I get a little bit stuck because I think staff in looking at the RFP and the development of the RFP is all on board, and I can, I mean, as far as what I can see in my packet, when I've been privy to very appropriate process, it's, it's in, you know, being a year and a half on council and learning through these RFPs and maybe in looking back what you, what we could look at. And I think the difficult part is, both of these companies, these, the Waste Management and the Republic, they're both industry leaders, and they're both pushing each other to be better and doing some really amazing things. I think in the end, it's, it's a little, it's a little interesting that it's, we're rewarding the, the energy production at the landfill whenever ultimately it's us trying to get less product to the landfill, and they're of course going to be able to have more energy production if they get more organics coming in. And so looking back on this RFP process and thinking what I might have done differently and for the community as far as really making us reach our environmental goals and our, yeah, I think our greenhouse gas emissions, all of those things, is really trying to see if we couldn't have had a way to not only do curbside, but then ask if our transfer stations could be creative and figure out yet another way to find how we could minimize the amount that we're having leave Waukam County. And I, but that's not what this RFP is doing, and I think that's where, like Pinky said, I'm having a difficult time pulling it apart. But you only learn those things as you're on council because none of us are an expert in solid waste and disposal contracts. My last question is just like, over 20 years, what is, what is the expected amount of this contract that we're going to spend? Is it...
Right now, I'd have to look at that. I don't have the numbers, the annual numbers. I believe annually it's in the $1 to $1.2 million.
Over a year? So over 20 years?
Twenty-plus million.
Oh, okay. I originally had heard that it was $100 million contract, so I wanted to...
That's been stated several times, that's inaccurate.
Okay, so we're thinking about $20 million over the next 20 years, 25? Okay.
I think it is important to know that we press very hard on the issue that you're raising, and at the end, both transfer stations handle residential waste the same.
Okay.
One puts it on a truck, one puts it on a rail.
Okay.
There's no additional recycling done. That came directly from the respondent.
Well, I just want to say that actually these criteria weren't just given to us. The council had a role in shaping the criteria, and they were changed at our direction. We emphasized, we tried to emphasize a few items which weren't emphasizingable, but one of the things that is different is the weighting for the environmental impact, the footprint. That was, that was highlighted by the council, and the weighting for that criteria was selected. So I really appreciate staff focusing on transportation, the moving of big quantities, large distances can have a large footprint if it's, you know, done in an inefficient manner. You clarified that it isn't just like trucks versus trains, both truck and train. The majority of the distance is trains in both cases. In one case, there's a significant trucking component down to Seattle somewhere, 80 miles, 90 miles, I don't know right where their station is. With the other proposal, which has a lower carbon footprint, there's a trucking component at the end. Are we talking like a half mile at the end, or like 10 miles or 20 miles at the end?
I believe it's a couple miles. Eric may have that. There's a couple things to consider in that, it's all off-road, so it's all with on the landfill itself, and so they're not bringing the freight, the truck freight's over the highway. So they're using different tractors, they're using heavier loads, so there's some efficiencies as part of that when comparing to an over-the-highway truck. Do you know the distance?
It's about four miles up the hill. So with the Roosevelt landfill and the Columbia River is at the bottom of the, if you look at the Columbia River, it's at the bottom of the, at the river. The Roosevelt landfill is up on top of the plateau there, so they get from the rail line on a private road that's owned and operated by Republic. As Ted mentioned, those are, those are heavier loads than what you would see on the highway. The highway truck is probably limited to 20, 20 tons or so. Those trucks are loaded to 25, more than 25 tons moving up the hill. So trying to find that mathematical balance between, you know, 80 miles on a legal load on the highway versus a very heavy load on a private road, it's, the analysis is essentially that it's more efficient and less greenhouse gas emissions using Republic's process versus the Waste Management system.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification because that's where I think some of the biggest savings can occur. But I think really looking at this, the biggest savings that we can occur is actually prior to this contract. This contract is sort of removing from the transfer station to a landfill. Our real gains, our real goals are prior to that. That's our services with SSC, that's the curbside recycling, that's the separation that occurs voluntarily in some cases with the organics and mandatorily with the other items. Where I live, I go through other people's garbage a fair amount. It's the recycling I'm going through, and I'm preventing spoilage of other people's recycling. It's really important. I think that's where some of our greatest gains is.
If I could just add to that point, Mr. Lilliquist, that the city is still committed to doing everything we can to encourage recycling of commodity recycling and organics, and that will not stop. We will continue that process moving forward using SSC and hopefully with our, with our disposal contract to encourage those efforts consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, that this continues that relationship. We will still continue to encourage to meet that net zero, zero-waste goal that the city and the county have together. But meeting that goal is consistent with plans that have been well-established for many years, is curbside sorting for residential waste.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is that I'm hoping that there will be, that all that sorting and diversion will occur in the early stages and that the tonnage that goes from the transfer, to the transfer station, and the tonnage that goes to the landfill will be flat or going down. Roxanne?
Another thing that I'm concerned with is that our community is going to grow substantially in 20 years. So I want to pick the organization that has the best financial plan, that will be the best partner for us when we are so much larger and dealing with so much more waste, and being much more practical about looking those people in the eyes 20 years from now and trying to make a better decision on their behalf.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion before us to approve negotiation with the selected respondent. The selected respondent in this case is Republic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That passes 6 to 1. Thank you very much. Terry, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next item was the Post Point Treatment Plant Bio-Solids Project Update. Building on previous Bio-Solids option studies, the Bio-Solids project team completed the Triple Bottom Line Plus evaluation of alternatives to the current practice of incineration at Post Point. The project team received feedback at public open house events and through, through other public involvement processes consistent with the project's public involvement plan. The staff offered an update on the Triple Bottom Line Plus process and overview of the results of the public involvement process to date. This was for information only. The last item was a proposal to remove two on-street parking stalls from West Champion Street. The restaurant of 100 North is a tenant of a city-owned space at... The restaurant of 100 North is a tenant of a city-owned space at 100 North Commercial Street in the Mount Baker Theater Building. The owner of 100 North has been working with the Planning and Community Development Department to establish an outside dining area. In order to maintain a pedestrian-accessible route around the dining area, the sidewalk needs to be widened, which results in the loss of two on-street parking stalls together with two street trees. The tenant will be responsible for maintenance of the newly created landscaped area. Public Works and Parks have reviewed the proposed plan and recommended approval. On July 11th, 2017, the Transportation Commission reviewed the proposal and voted 7-0 to recommend approval to City Council. Today, the committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second. We have a motion before us to approve the removal of two on-street parking stalls from West Champion Street. Is there any further discussion on this?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
End of committee report.
Thank you, Terry. The next committee that met this afternoon was the Lake Waukam Reservoir and Natural Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Dan Hamel.
Thank you. I was joined on my committee by councilmembers Bornham and Knutson. We had covered a rather lengthy report from the Lake Waukam Policy Group and I just want to hit on a few of these items here this evening. I encourage folks that are interested in water quality issues to go back and watch this afternoon's video for more of a complete report. This is a, a report from the July 17th Lake Waukam Policy Group meeting. I wanted to discuss the, or report out the, that we talked about the Flood Control Zone District that was created in 1992. Currently, there are capital investments that are depleting the fund on the current spending is, will deplete the reserve sometime in 2018. The county's examining a variety of levels of service. The first two are just, they're not adequate, I believe, to meet some goals in terms of levies, in terms of support from the Army Corps of Engineers. I do want to focus in on Level Service 3 and 4, which will require a $1.7 million funding gap be filled, and Level Service 4 would require a $2 million gap be filled. So options for increasing revenues included, or include an increase in the flood tax. To achieve a Level of Service 3 taxes would need to be raised by additional $20,000 a year for, for a $300,000 house. Seven and eight years ago, so in 2009 and 2010, a Lake Waukam surcharge was considered. So this would be a watershed fee set at $60 per property per year and that would bring in about $400,000 for work in the Lake Waukam basin. So $2 million is the, is the need for Level of Service 4, 1.7 for Level of Service 3, so the 400,000 doesn't get us there. And the county council is the decision-making authority on this funding. I bring this up because the, the lake is our, is the city's drinking water supply. It's also the drinking water supply for other entities, including Southern Valley. The other item I wanted to discuss or report out on tonight is the Aquatic Invasive Species Year-to-Date Update. Our staff had permit sales and inspections that are ahead of July last year. To date, 4,700 or over 4,700 permits have been sold and over 7,200 inspections have been completed. The program has intercepted a number of high-risk boats this year. A boat from Texas that had been launched in a lake infested with zebra mussels had water in its ballast tank and had to be fully decontaminated. Another boat from Wisconsin was observed with zebra mussel shells in a sea strainer and was also, or also received a full decontamination. Some kayaks from infested area with mussel shells have also been intercepted and decontaminated. There were some other ones as well from a boat from Lake Havasu in Arizona. So the, the point is, is that this program protects our drinking water quality and protects our, our Lake Waukam reservoir from aquatic invasive species through the, through the inspection process. We have one more Lake Waukam Policy Group meeting this year and this is going to be on October 16th at 3:00 PM in the fireplace room at 625 Hallock Street. We will then go over the Aquatic Invasive Species Annual Program Review, so we'll have more numbers there, and also a review of the 2017 Homeowner Improvement Program, which is the program that works to reduce phosphorus intake into the lake. And that's the end of committee report.
Thank you very much. Following your presentation, I, I asked the council to facilitate a presentation on Lake Waukam capital spending for water quality. I talked with Ted, he said that the mayor and he are already looking at a September date for that and we're going to look to coordinating with the county to get a presentation on their projects as well.
Thanks.
Okay. And the next committee was the committee of the whole. We had five items before us. The first item was an overview of CenturyLink's application for cable television franchise. As we heard earlier, this, this evening, the council has just approved that franchise agreement, so I'll go on to the next item. The next item we heard this afternoon was the Phase 3 Recommendation of the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Behavioral Health Subcommittee. In particular, this focuses on the GRACE program. The Behavioral Health Ad Hoc Committee focused on developing and enhancing services that may avert arrest and incarceration. This effort aligns with our priority to develop or improve programs that link to the front door of the crisis triage facility, that is, giving people another place to enter the system that's more appropriate rather than being arrested or put in jail. The committee provided ongoing review and feedback on community initiative to develop a coordinated system of engagement and response with individuals who frequently use crisis and criminal justice systems in ineffective and inappropriate ways. These individuals are known as familiar faces that our community spends significant time and money on with minimal positive impact. This initiative, which will be known by the name Ground Level Response and Coordinated Engagement, or GRACE, is a community effort encompassing the healthcare system and the criminal justice system. The GRACE project is intended in part to prevent and reduce arrest and incarceration for targeted groups of individuals by providing better coordination of interventions that connect them to treatment and support services that serve as alternatives to jail. This program is not another crisis system program to be used by anyone in distress. Instead, is a specific program of coordinated interventions aimed at preventing unnecessary responses to individuals with high utilization of these services. This afternoon, we were actually shown, I hope I have it, kind of a colorful diagram of the system and then a different version of the same thing, which shows the various players. Many of these agencies or organizations already exist and already have funding, but there may be room for new positions and new functions to make the system work. We heard this afternoon from Ann Deacon, who's the Human Services Manager for Waukam County, and Dean White, who has just been appointed the Special Project Manager for the GRACE program itself. There is hope that some of the funding for this, as I said, is already in place in existing agencies, but new funding might come from the North Sound Accountable Communities for Health. The North Sound is one of nine regions in Washington State that have special healthcare funding. I don't know, Dan, if I did that justice? Is there anything more to report on that?
You did it justice.
Thank you. That was for mission, information only. Yeah? Next item was discussion of the draft City Council Communications Plan. At a retreat this year earlier in March, the council expressed our desire for a City Council Communications Plan as a written document to indicate how, why, and who we communicate with and for. Councilmembers Lilliquist, myself, and Councilman Vargas, as current president, past president of the council, volunteered to work with our city council staff, Marie Marchand and Mark Gardner, to develop a plan. This plan then was shared around. The draft was revised, reviewed by legal. The draft is in our packet today. We had a discussion this afternoon on its contents and its purposes, and this afternoon, the full committee recommended approval of the communications plan and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Any further discussion of approving the city councils, adopting the city council's communication plan? Pinky.
Thank you, Michael. I just wanted to add a couple of things for the public so they understand why we're doing this communications plan and a couple of things that came to light last year as they were, residents were asking for more communication and easier ways to find out information with the city. So a couple of things that we did in this communication plan, one of them is to increase our social media exposure and presence and to do so by highlighting things that we think are general information, that people want to know what we're working on and where, what direction we're going into. Another one is we created something called our Top Issues section, which when we have things that have a lot of content and are really high-focus issues like housing and the jail proposal, that people can go on our website and go on the council page and find links to what our top issues sections are. And that will mean that you can find clips of any conversation that happens on the dais about those subjects. You'll see any press releases or any materials that are, support any initiatives that we're working on in our hot topics, example, housing or jail issues. So just in order to have better communication, more transparency, and make it easier for the public to look for information on important issues that they're concerned about. Thanks, Michael.
April?
Yeah. So just to reiterate what Pinky was saying, it's just an opportunity to really advertise it, is that if you do go to our hot topics on the city council webpage, we've specifically been honing in on housing and trying to make it easier than going to the larger sire page where you have to figure out which video should I watch where, where the council actually talked about housing. So if you click on, for instance, Housing for Everyone, you could then click on Rental Barriers and Concerns, and then you would be able to watch every city, every single committee meeting and get all of the attachments and the, the presentations that we received in order. And actually, the idea was because many times what will happen is we'll do a lot of work over a period of time, but then a little bit of misinformation gets out and it, it kind of blossoms, it takes on its own life. And I've always found it really hard to help constituents understand exactly all the work that we did, done, and then it's, and then I find it, I have to go through and find all those videos and plug people in. And so far, it's worked. So through the rental barriers and concerns, we did ask staff to build an ordinance and I've already had about a couple of phone calls and three emails where just gross misinformation, like, I can't believe that you're going to make me accept, bring down my, bring down my rent and accept a Section 8, somebody who has Section 8 subsidy. And I was able to say, hey, why don't you go back here, watch all these videos, and if you're still confused about it, let me know. And I haven't heard back from any of those. And so I, and, and one actually said, oh, that's not at all what I thought it was, so I'm, I'm fine. Now we're working on affordable housing. We had the conversation that, that Jean talked about earlier with the school system coming and telling them how our housing is actually impacting the education of our children. And so that, it'll take about a week, but if you click on again, Hot Topics, Housing for All, it's right above the Rental Barriers and Concerns and you'll click on Affordable Housing and we'll start putting in all of those and all the presentations that came along with it. So it's working great and I really appreciate past council president and current council president and Marie, of course, and Mark working on that.
Just one more comment. In there, there are communications objectives, there's eight bold points, those are actually based on council's discussions back in 2014. And I think one of the things that we've tried to do with this communication plan is not just to communicate after the fact, after a decision, but communicate during our deliberative process, which as you say, for housing, it's still ongoing. There are pieces that may finish and other pieces that may keep going. Okay, all those in favor of approving the communications plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item on our list was a Criminal Justice Committee. The Criminal Justice Committee, the council voted four to three to implement a new Criminal Justice Committee, and this afternoon we had some motions to approve a new chair, which would be April Barker, and two new committee members, Pinky and Terry. I would like to indicate that this is a city council committee. It didn't create any more powers or authorities or actions a city council can do. It simply divides up our, our workload, which committee is a go-to. Now it's going to this committee as opposed to this committee. And there was some discussion on items, which items which might have gone to a former committee would now be assigned to this committee. But it doesn't create any more powers. We, we're still a policymaking body, we're still a law-making body, none of that has changed. It's just how we divide up the workload and how we put it into bins for discussion. In terms of procedure, we already voted in committee to appoint, I guess in the evening we need to ratify that recommendation?
Remembering during the reorg, I think we always, at some point, vote during an actual council meeting.
So this afternoon, the committee of the whole voted to appoint April Barker as a chair of the committee and Pinky Vargas and Terry Bornham as the committee members and I so move.
Second.
Second? I mean, nevermind. Not that fast.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that new committee is now filled out. The next item we had was an update on pilot projects for inquiries, reports, and complaints. I think that's kind of an unfortunate title because it's a difficult topic when trying to get our, our heads around. The administration discussed a draft scope of work for a pilot project for community members to make inquiries, reports, and probably most importantly, complaints that they may feel about city employees and a mechanism by, by which they can feel that there's kind of a safe harbor, I think you called it, Kelly, a safe mechanism for people to report what might be discrimination or misconduct or civil rights violations by city employee. If they don't feel, they can come directly to the city because maybe they feel that, you know, we're the people who, you know, are responsible for it. We want to create another doorway, another mechanism. There is in our packet a scope of work, we're just developing a proposal for what that alternate doorway would look like. It does not replace our current disciplinary mechanisms, which would continue to be in place. You continue to complain the old way, you've always complained, thank you very much. That was for information only because the administration is still working on that proposal. I think we gave a little bit of feedback to help focus. Is there any further discussion on this item? Jean?
Just because it was mentioned tonight for the gentleman who came, it's not an oversight committee, sir. This is a mechanism for people to feel that they could go somewhere else to ask questions or to bring theirself through City Hall. This has nothing to do with an oversight committee, so it's just another way of getting their questions answered or their complaints heard, so. That's why I'm supporting. I wouldn't support the others.
Okay, we'll go on now to approval of meeting minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. We have meeting minutes from June 19th and from July 10th.
Move approval.
Second.
That's the motion for, I believe, both sets of minutes. Was there any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes for June 19th or July 10th? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are indeed approved. Old and new business. We had several items that were brought up this afternoon. Would someone like to mention those again or should we move on? Okay, well, I would like to mention one thing, which is that the city council office will be closed soon, July 27th through 31st. Our staff are on a well-deserved vacation and there'll be no one, neither of our two staff members will be in the office during that time. Is there any further, anything else under old and new?
Can I just say?
Oh, I'm sorry. Who is first?
Go ahead.
Roxanne, and then Pinky.
I just want to say Waukam County mailed out ballots to everybody in our community and to remind everybody to please vote by August 1st. That's it.
Pinky?
Yeah, I, two quick items. We just had Waukam Homeless Connect, Project Waukam Homeless Connect on Friday. Wanted to thank Dan Hamel for his work on that and for everybody who volunteered, and I think that it is just getting better and better and it's a really amazing experience for anybody who's ever been part of it or volunteered or received services that day. I, I think it's pretty tremendous that the city of Bellingham does this, so thank you, Dan, for your leadership on that.
Yeah.
And then also, I wanted to mention, I am on the tourism board and we have, the application process is open right now for anybody for tourism grants. Those do, those are due on September 8th. We have two grants, one is for $5,000, which can be used for any startup in marketing or operations, and then some are from between 2,500 to 25,000. This is an event, an art, an exhibit, whatever it is, whatever your creativity is, Bellingham, we want to hear from you and we invite you to apply for these grants because there are really, the, the money comes from the tourism, from the hotels, and the encouragement is for us to bring things that bring people to the city of Bellingham. So that is part of the criteria. All the application and information is on our website. Just want to encourage everybody to apply because the more creativity we have in those applications, the better our city will be. So thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly, yes.
It's so easy.
Although you have, you have the mayor's report coming up too.
Well, I had, I had old and new business.
Okay, please, then.
So the first one is the Community Development Work Plan was supposed to be presented. Sam is on vacation, so we will be doing that after our break, so in September. And secondly, I had a conversation with Pinky about the logo refresh and the Bellingham City logo. Yeah. Okay.
I didn't know we were refreshing it.
Well, that's one reason why I wanted to bring it up here is because there has been a desire to refresh, but I was wanting to make sure that everybody was on board before we went forward. Peter is researching what we have to do and it's not going to be a quick thing like we can just do it tomorrow. You can do whatever you want, Pinky. Okay. But anyway, I don't, I didn't know if there was a, basically a consensus that we wanted to adopt, basically the, the logo that Brad... to adopt, basically, the logo that Brad, but yeah, no, yeah, proposed. I told him we were going to look at it, but I know that Pinky was anxious to do something. So I guess we don't have to, we're going to still look at how you, how you do that. It's been a complicated process in the past, but if the committee might like to discuss it, I'd appreciate that, just so I feel like I have clear direction.
Well, about 10 years ago, there was a refresh that failed.
That wasn't a refresh. That was a debacle.
Public Works designed that. Nothing against you guys. You're awesome. Just saying, not graphic designers.
No, it was.
Can I just add a little context?
Sure, please.
Because maybe not everyone is aware. Okay, so I have been on this diligently, so this is why the mayor is asking me to bring this forward.
Thanks, Kelly.
Well, I'm not going to do it without making sure everybody's on board.
So last, last year, a logo design was submitted to the city and given free with all the, with all the, so we can use it in any way we want, et cetera, all, just given us complete permission of it. And I'd love for us to maybe bring this forward so that you guys can see what it looks like, but it's very fresh and looks a lot more exciting than our city seal and is a lot more legible from a distance, et cetera. And I've been waiting to get new business cards because I've been out for a while and because, so I've been waiting for the logo process to be refreshed, which is why I keep bugging Mayor Kelly. So, but I realize that not everyone is aware of that or has maybe seen it or has received input from the community about it, which I think some of us have have not. So maybe, Kelly, I could throw that on the agenda under...
Well, I think we were planning on seeing if there was a majority that would like us to bring back to show it and show, you know, have a discussion about it. So either let me know right now.
Council members? Jean?
Terry, Terry had his hand up.
This is the first we heard about it, so yeah, I don't mind us looking at it, you know.
Because to look at it.
I supported the flag idea from the beginning and brought it forward, and I like that, but it needs to come before us before we know about it.
Yeah, and I...
And so I wouldn't mind you working on it, so I'll go along with seeing it, but not supporting it until we...
Then we'll talk about the process and what we would use it for and that kind of thing, so.
Jean?
Having lived through the last process, I just hope we do it a little bit differently, and you're doing it the right way by bringing it forward. You know, you're talking about this logo. Is that what you're talking about? Okay. Because we had a, it wasn't only a bad process, but it was very expensive because we changed everything, and then we changed everything back. So be prepared. I mean, this might be sacred to some people, but to have the discussion and take a look at what Brad's done, certainly what he's already done, I'm probably being optimistic that it'll be something that we might all be able to live with.
It looks very, very much like the flag.
Okay. Well, anyway, anyway, just, you're doing it the right way.
Okay. So we will bring back, we'll bring back a presentation on the process that we go through and the impacts that it could have, you know, what the impacts would be, where we want to use it, that kind of thing, just to make sure that everybody's on board.
Okay. I think I'm with Jean on this. I do remember how it went. I do know it was expensive.
It was expensive.
Yeah, I don't think it would just spend too much time. The Bellingham flag, that was cheap, right? I mean, that's nice process. When someone works free like Brad?
On this one, they gave it to us. But you guys have to see it.
No, no, this is different, though. This could be on all of our vehicles. I mean, this, this has a much, when I brought it up with staff, this has a much broader impact, and I just think we should all be aware of what that is.
So my request basically is, I think we, unlike with the flag, we need, I think, a lengthy transition plan where we're not going to go out and remove the logo from all of our trucks. I think we should replace them, you know, as needed. I just don't think, I think rebranding this, this old tired thing is a good idea, but incurring enormous expense to do so. I think we should have a transition plan.
I, I think absolutely a transition.
Point of order, we're in old and new business. We have time to discuss this in the future.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else, Kelly?
Well, I think that was it.
Just one question on this. We're just giving you the go-ahead to look at it, not, not that we're approving.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
The controversy starts already.
Yep.
Kelly, anything more? Something soft?
Well, when I get to mayor's report, I have something else.
That's enough out of you, Rick. Go ahead.
Yes, you do? Okay. Okay, keep going. Okay, so we'll go on to executive session report. Originally had five items. One of those items was postponed and a new item was added. The first item was collective bargaining strategy session with the Wacom Dispatchers Guild and staff provided us with information about contract negotiations with this bargaining unit. It was for information and discussion only. Council took no action. The second item was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Right now, I would entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of six tenths of an acre parcel, which is located in the west side of Boulevard, directly across the street from the "Welcome to Bellingham" sign from the estate of Rosemary Bandell for the sum of $27,000.
Move second.
I think I heard a so moved over here. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion before us to purchase this piece of property. Any further discussion on this?
It's exciting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That is unanimous after all. The third item was litigation, Flint versus the city of Bellingham. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. This is for information and council discussion only. Council took no action. And then the last item, one that was added, was for information only. It was on a potential litigation, and again, the city council took no action. That's the end of the executive session report. The mayor's report is next.
All right. First of all, I really enjoyed the presentation this morning in planning with Steve. First of all, he's just a really great guy, and he presents his information with so much heart. You'd like to listen to him. But he also had some good ideas about working together to make sure that we're placing schools or housing in school district areas that might be more conducive to the mixture in our neighborhoods and our schools, which was a great idea. And so I'm glad he was talking about that, and I like the format of that committee. That's good. I wanted to clarify something because I know there was a gentleman here earlier who was very unhappy about the county council meeting and the taping and the public comment, and the city, BTV Bellingham does not tape the county council meetings, so I just wanted to make that very clear, that we don't put them on TV. We don't, they're done by somebody else. So just for your, you guys' information, too. And third, I almost brought you pictures of me when I was growing up. I showed them to Pinky today. Can I just tell an anecdote because it's not 9:00 yet? They've been over so early. I have a picture that my mother, I was in the kiddies parade in 1958. There are old cars in that picture that make me feel like that was, you know, the days of Al Capone. But it was called the, it was a diversity march with all the children in our neighborhood with different, you know, different clothing on, and it said, do you remember what it said, Pinky?
Melody for Diversity or what?
It was something like, "The sweetest melody is racial diversity," or something. This is 1958. Oh, well, Brian knows. Sweetest melody is racial harmony. Well, I just thought it was interesting.
Another letter. Bellingham.
Good night. Anyway, I just want, I just wanted to tell you that, that Bellingham has not ever been an extremely racially diverse city. It's becoming much more so, but I'm a product of an economically diverse neighborhood, and I think it was almost as important. And so I like what we're talking about in making sure that our neighborhoods are diverse, whether it's racially and culturally or economically, because I think it adds a richness to our community, and I give my mom a lot of credit for thinking of that in 1958. It was a long time ago. Mayor's appointment of Joe Timmons to the Community Development Advisory Board. It's for information only, and that's it.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome, Michael.
Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Do we have a second? Well, you can second your own motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes unanimously. Final consideration of ordinances. We have four of them.
Agenda Bill 21634, in ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, relating to the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, amending the Barclay Neighborhood Plan and rezoning a portion of the property located at 3001 East Sunset Drive in Area 1 of the Barclay Neighborhood from residential, single to commercial, planned, and amending the Neighborhood Plan land use map and zoning map.
Move third and final.
Second.
We have a motion before us. Roll call.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, 7-0. Agenda Bill 21635, in ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, relating to the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, amending the Cordada Neighborhood Plan and rezoning a portion of the property located at 4260 Pacific Highway in Area 20 of the Cordada Neighborhood from residential, single to industrial, planned, and amending the Neighborhood Plan land use map and zoning map.
Move third and final.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, 7-0. Agenda Bill 21654, in ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, relating to the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning, amending the Cordada Neighborhood Plan and Bellingham Municipal Code Title 20, Cordada Neighborhood Table of Zoning Regulations.
Move third and final.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.